Well, good evening. Thank you for attending the Tuesday, August 20, 2013, regular meeting of the City Council. First, we begin our meeting with the invocation. And I was looking for Reverend Susan O'Leary. And if Susan is not here, I will do the invocation and led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Steffert Hurford. Everyone, please rise.
Dear Lord, thank you for our opportunity to be here tonight and to gather and to express how we feel with each other. Please give the council and everyone in the city of West Covina what they need in their hearts and in their minds to communicate and to please protect everyone in our community and watch out over everyone. And again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here and gather tonight in your name. Amen.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Sanderson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hurford?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Setello?
Here.
Councilmember Sykes?
Here.
Thank you so much. At this time, Mr. City Manager, who would be reporting up from closed session?
That'd be Mr. Glasson.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, the recruitment group, that the City Council convened this evening for the items listed for closed session. Prior to recessing into closed session, the three items that were listed on the special agenda were announced. And the following is my report. Under conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the CGM Development Inc. versus City of West Covina, the City Council provided a direction to authorize the city manager to retain legal counsel for the city of West Covina due to the conflict of interest that exists for the city attorney's office. That was a four-zero vote with Mayor Sanderson absent from that matter. The second item was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. The City Council also, and the successor agency, on a four-o vote authorized defending the action filed by the state of California for condemnation matters involving Sears Development Corporation and a number of parties, including the city of West Covina and the successor agency with the city attorney's office representing on behalf of the city of West Covina and Glenn Block serving as counsel for the successor agency. On the final matter, all five council members were present. There was no final action taken. Direction was given to staff with respect to this matter, and this will be brought back at a future date. That concludes my report from closed session. It is appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you so much. And at this time, we would do our presentations, and we do not have any this evening. So we will move on with our oral communications. So we have a five-minute speaking limit, and we have yellow cards at the top of the stairs, which you can fill out and turn in to the city clerk, and she will give those to me. So with that, our first speaker is Mr. John Hughes.
Well, thank you, Mayor Sanderson, members of council, staff, guests. We're here tonight to thank you for all of your support with our MDA events. I have with me, from the Muscular Dystrophy Association, Annie Wondry. I think I gave you all copies of what we did this year. We raised $114,946, which a good part of it, that's going to Good Samaritan Hospital for research, Rancho Los Amigos Children's Hospital, Orange County. And we sent kids to summer camp last month. And we have a Christmas party coming up on December 1st at the West Covina Elks Club. And we have another event, Taste of the Valley. So any Christmas tree lane at the Elks Club. And we're in need of donations from different restaurants, gift certificates and so forth, if you could help us out for that. And I'm gonna let Annie say a couple of things about the -- we got a couple of presentations to make, so Madam Mayor, if you'd come down here and help us. Annie?
Yep. So we have a couple of events that are gonna be coming up. We have our Show of Strength, which is our new Jerry Lewis telethon. It's kind of by -- it's been revamped and redone. So we have our Show of Strength telethon, which is going to be airing ABC primetime on Labor Day weekend on Sunday, the 1st, at 9:00 PM. So we'll be recognizing the city of West Covina and John Hughes during that program for a brief moment. It's a two-hour program. And then we also have our premiere party for all of our local sponsors and families that help support all of our ongoing efforts. It's gonna be Thursday, August 29th, at Center Club in Costa Mesa. So we'd love to have you guys join us for the premiere of the Show of Strength and then for some appetizers, so.
Okay, so if you get the -- well, we have a presentation to give to the mayor, first of all, to the mayor for all the support of the city, all the staff and everything. And thank you so much.
You love that handrail.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you so much for the committee, John. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So if you want us.
Well, thank you. Caught me off by surprise, but it means so much because you do so much. And I should be the one standing here handing you the award because what you do and how you bring community to West Covina is so appreciated, and this means a lot to me. And I do have a special area in my home, and this will go there on the wall where I can always remember you and everyone that's done so much for us. So thank you so much for that.
Okay. Our fourth --
We want to -- I turn it off, and then you can -- I'm habit, sorry.
Now, remember who you're standing between, John, and smile. They're trying one more, maybe, without the flash. Come on, here. Coming after you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you turn that on, if you want me to just -- we're gonna do other --
We're gonna do others.
All right, so do I want to just stay right here?
Yeah. You know, our Fourth of July event wouldn't have been the success that it is. I think we had, I don't know, 20,000 people? I don't -- it was wall-to-wall people. But we couldn't have done this event without GWC. This is for all your hard work. And she's doing a great job in a lot of other things, too, so congratulations.
Thank you, John. It's a great pleasure for me to be able to contribute a little bit that we do for this great event and for everything that you do for muscular dystrophy. So thank you.
Okay, and now we have a couple -- did you want to get a picture? Okay. That'll be $9.95 for each picture. Get in here, Shelley.
We'll do a whole move after, not --
Oh, okay.
I'll stay over here.
Can I cover that, John? Let me take a second picture, John.
You want to say something about the fire department?
Yeah, I may have this one, too.
Yeah, I know we did.
Okay.
We'll do that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, there was a couple of organizations here in the city that really helped us, and I think Steve, you'd be the guy to come down here. Come down here a minute, will you? The Castucci Foundation has been supportive of us for several years. I knew Catherine real well, and she always supported this event, so we wanted to present this because I know Steve has been the main man, him and Mike Toohey, on this. So we thank the Castucci Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have one other here. Now, I don't know if you'd want to take this or not, but Athens --
Steve?
Athens, Despoles.
Where do you think you're going?
They've been very supportive of us every year, and so we want to thank them, and I know you've helped us with that, too, so.
Art from one of our MDA kids.
Great. Oh, that's super. Thank you. Make sure they get it.
Now, all of the staff and everybody, I'm thanking everybody, but I know Annie was at the fire station here a month ago, and you might want to say something about that.
Yes. So we also work very closely with the West Covina Fire Department, and every year they do an annual fill-the-boot. So if you see them out on the streets, at the shopping mall here at Westfield or at Eastland, they do a big fill-the-boot out there for us. And this year was a record-breaking year. They brought in $35,000, which is really incredible. So we did a two-day fill-the-boot over a weekend in April. So they did an amazing job. So big thanks out to our big, our West Covina Fire Department. So thank you, guys.
We also had a pancake breakfast at the Elks Club that the police department put on, and we made $1,800 down there. So I'd sure like to have our chiefs come down, and we'll have a group picture together, huh?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Shelley, get in here.
Chief, your guy has the plaque.
So thanks a lot to everybody. You don't know how much we appreciate it, and we'll be doing this again next year.
Real quick, Steve, do you want to get in? Why not? Okay. Can I take you quick, sir? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, chief. Thanks, chief. And thank you, Andy. All right. Thank you all.
My name is Lenore Carvahal, and I live in 1805 Woodgate Drive. And the reason why I'm here is to thank all of you for all your support during my recent drama.
They broke in my house twice. And everybody here helped me. Mr. McIntyre and the Chief of Police and everyone, they've been very, very supportive, and I want to thank you for that. Also, I want to tell you that I went to see the lighting on the -- for the paseo, and I really, really like those lightings. So if we can have them around the paseo on the back of my house, because it's really, really dark at night, it's constantly peeking through the window to see if they're around there someplace. But the lighting will be really, really good. I hope we'll have them soon. Also, the stairs, maybe we'll put a fence so they won't go up, or that will help. That will be greatly appreciated. And once again, thank you for all your work, and the lighting will be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lola Finley.
Hi, my name is Lola Finley. I'm at 2804 Courtney Circle in West Covina. I spoke last City Council meeting. I'm here for the same reason, but first I'd like to tell, say thank you again, like Lenore, to the Chief of Police, La Camer, to Commander Bell, to Lieutenant Saritos, and to Shannon Yahtzee. And we really appreciate you coming out. Andrew McIntyre to a meeting, and Fred for -- not Fred, excuse me, for Robert, for giving him our phone number. We had a meeting and addressed some of the issues. I know it's not going to resolve overnight, but we're going to be here every week, every meeting, until we get it all resolved. And I know no one has a perfect community, but I've lived here a long time. I know what I had, and I know what I want to get back. So I just want to thank everyone for all that they've done and putting the signs up at the park right now. I know we have a ways to go, but just the motivation, we're really, really thankful, and we're really happy for it. And I thank you for looking at those properties where the townhouse is in. I'm looking forward to hearing from you, see if maybe we found out who the rental property owners or the rental agency is. But my main concern tonight is, I made a proposition, propose that you guys have an ordinance for rental properties. And I sent everyone except for Steve Hurford, because his email isn't on the -- his online, but everyone who had their email online, I sent them the ordinance from Covina. I spoke to Christopher Chung regarding it, and I just want to make clear, I know every city's different. I don't want to run it verbatim, but there are some really good points in there. We're going to be here till we pass it. We need to meet the -- make the landlords responsible for their tenants and their, you know, absentee rental property owners. Like I said last time, I own rental property in multi-cities. I'm the one that's going to be impacted. I have property in Covina, have property in West Covina, and I'm for it. I've seen it work in Covina immediately, within two weeks of them passing it. It made a difference in my neighborhood by my rental properties. I know it will be just as effective in Covina, I mean, in West Covina. So what I'd like you to do is, please read those ordinance. I know it says 71 pages, but it truly isn't 71 pages. It's just the same agenda over and over. But if you'd like to speak with me, what we would like to pass, basically, it's just a permit we're asking to be -- each landlord to be able to get. If they don't abide by the rules, you know, have good tenants, or be able to -- we have the right to revoke their right to do business in the community. I mean, if you had a store, if there's a business in this community who kept on doing, breaking the law, breaking the law, we would revoke their business license or do something to stop it. We need to hold that still true for our rental property owners. We have a lot of absentee residents in that townhouse area. Andrew and I drove over there. There is someone in charge. I know people say there's no property manager over there. There is someone in charge. Someone's doing the landscaping. But when you drive over there, probably 80% of them are not being maintained. There's no grass, there's no foliage. They're not even being watered. So that blight is coming to my neighborhood, and it's very close, and it hasn't always been there. I've been living, I've lived here since the 80s, so it hasn't always been there. And some of the properties are maintained really nice. When you go to the top, I don't know who owns it, but the landscape is absolutely pristine. So you can do it, and if you live there, you should take care of your yard. If it's an absentee landlord, I shouldn't be penalized for them. They're making money, they should be able to maintain their property. So I'd like to, I know it's not on the agenda. I was hoping, you know, it will come up, and I hope to hear from someone, anyone, regarding this. And if you are against it, please let us know the pros and cons. We're going to keep on coming. We want it passed. We want something done. And even in my neighborhood, we have some rental properties, and Shannon sent emails. I know he sent letters because they're washing their boat that's been there forever, they're mowing their lawn. The problem is, it's only temporarily. I know once you guys go away, they're going to go right back. The people who own the rental property have owned it for years and years and years. I mean, I know it's a positive cash flow, they have plenty of money to maintain it, they just don't want to. And I think that if they're not called upon it, they're not going to take care of it. With this ordinance, they get three chances to maintain their property. And then, if not, you guys revoke their permits to be able to rent it to, as rental property. So thank you for listening, and I hope to hear from whoever, all of you guys preferably. But again, thank you, Chief of Police and everyone, for all they've done.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Weeks.
My name is Jeffrey Weeks. I reside at 2809 Courtney Circle in the city of West Covina. I, too, was here at the meeting two weeks ago. I want to thank the City Council members for their time and attention. I wanted to bring up something that I was somewhat reluctant to bring up, but to cite for you an example of why it's important to have those people who own properties that they're renting or leasing accountable. I, a few years ago, had some rooms for rent in another city, San Dimas, and I had several gentlemen living there. Well, one of them invited his girlfriend to move in, and she, unbeknownst to probably both of us, had a gentleman who, or a son, who was, in fact, just getting out of prison. And unfortunately, when I found all of this out, it was because the police made a visit to the townhouse. They had been looking for this young man because of his associations with known criminal elements. And even though it was suggested to him by a number of people who were concerned about him, that he'd make new friends, he chose not to do that. One of my tenants was handcuffed and taken out to a squad car, who had no knowledge of what was going on. Well, another incident occurred where I happened to be there and involved, and it also required the police come out looking for this same gentleman. And unfortunately, his mother lied and said he wasn't there when, in fact, he was hiding in the closet. All of this to say to you that this is not unusual. It was unusual for me to have to experience this. But the difficulty is then that with the prison system as it's presently functioning, and many prisoners getting out who need a place to live and, you know, a job and so on, this is going to become increasingly more serious for all of our communities, I believe. And if you don't pass certain rules, regulations, ordinances, whatever you want to call them, to place some restrictions, I mean, I'm, believe me, I'm not against criminals or people that have been incarcerated giving them another chance. The problem is, though, that too many times, they stay a criminal, and they associate with other criminals, or at least people that are, that we really would rather not see in our neighborhoods. So, you know, I think the whole City Council needs to get involved in looking at this because I don't think that this is going to go away. I appreciate the fact that you people have, the police department has put up speed -- I can't recall what it's called, but anyway, that reads your speed, because we do have some speeders on one of the streets right next door. And your other efforts, I think, better lighting, or at least better illumination needs to be done in areas like the paseo that was mentioned earlier. You know, there are certain things that you can do as a City Council, and I think it behooves you, because we are taxpayers. We want to stay in this community, but you know what's going to happen eventually is if you don't take care of these matters, you're going to drive people out of this community, and then your tax base is going to go way down. And, I mean, it just, you know, it just makes sense to take care of business now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Trudy Saltmarsh.
I live at 2809 Courtney Circle and have for the last 42 years, okay? I spoke the last time, and I want to thank the police presence that came about after the last council meeting. It's made a difference. I understand they've already caught two of the perpetrators. Question of it is, though, is the hoodlums are not entirely gone. They're still around. So we need to look at the source. What is the source of these people coming into our community? Too often, property investors, because they don't live in our community, they don't care about the quality of our life. All they care about is getting their funds. If we don't hold them responsible for who they rent to, who they allow to live on their property, then we're just looking for trouble, and we need to stop it before it gets hold here. I also ask, at the last council meeting, what was the balance in regards to affordable housing in our community? Okay? I understand that we are required, and it is only right, that we have a certain percentage of affordable housing. But if we become unbalanced to where we have more low-income people here than we do the middle class, as I consider myself still part of, again, you're going to drive people out of this community, and I don't think any of us want that. I've already heard people, our people in our group last time, that said, "We moved out of East LA to get away from this environment, and now it's followed us here." We don't want this here. We want to continue to have a good community where people care about each other, and we're not fighting off crime every day. So I urge you to do something about making landlords responsible for their property, making sure that we don't have more affordable housing, more Section 8 or whatever it is that is unbalanced, so that we get overwhelmed with it. And I thank you for listening to me, and I respectfully ask the city manager to speak up so that he can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Stewart.
Lady Mayor Sanderson, council, staff, even though I'm here every time we have a council meeting, I don't speak too much, so I'll, I've got a few, what I think are constructive comments here, and I'll go through them as best I can. So number one I'd like to talk about is the West Covina tour that Councilman Sykes put together. I was an hour late getting here, so I had my list, so I went on my own tour. But I'd just like to comment on that. I mean, you picked out good spots, but believe me, when I was on the planning commission, I made it a point to go different spots in town. You can get to a designated place going a lot, a lot of different ways. And there are so many problems in town, but you picked out some good ones. But what I saw, actually, was some of the worst, and some of the units up along San Bernardino or on the north of the freeway were probably the worst. But the real problem is, we probably have hundreds of houses in town. We have codes that would cover everything, but we're not manned enough to do it, to get, you know, anything about it. But we have hundreds of houses in town that don't have any lawns or brown lawns or no shrubs, cars in the driveway, I mean, lots of things. When we were on the planning commission, when we were talking about on-othrill cars in the driveways, I drove around town, but I took some pictures of not just the cars, but the ones that had other problems. I did turn them into the council here that night, but nobody were asking for the addresses. But I went by two of them on the way down here tonight, and both of them are worse than ever. But that's just, that's just one problem. We just, what we're going to do about it, I don't really know, but there's problems everywhere in town. And there was a lady here last time that she spoke about her water bill. I didn't really check mine out that close. She said that her water bill had doubled, or went up 100%, and that could be why people weren't watering the lawn that much. So I just happened to get my bill just that following week. I looked on there. Your bill, I think everybody in town's about the same, your bill is $50 before you draw one drop of water. And that's more than the bill used to be with all the water you could use. So I can see what she may have a little bit of a point about people not using much water as they used to. But anyway, the tour was very interesting. I looked at everything except the fence that's in your neighborhood that you had on your laptop there, and that definitely needs some problems. But what the problem is, what the solution is, it's tough, because maybe some volunteer code enforcement might work where you don't make contact with the people. You just go out and find whatever you're looking for and maybe bring back pictures or whatever, start with the worst ones. But that's, that job is up to you five right here, so I'm just kind of making an idea of it. Okay, we'll go on to something else. Next thing is, when I was on the community services side, well, I was a liaison to the sports council. That's what I chose, because that's kind of up my alley. But anyway, the whole time I was on the sports council, there wasn't one thing mentioned ever about what the, this, the council had talked about. In the year 2000, they came up about, they wanted to possibly have the fingerprinting go through here, and they turned it back to the leagues only. So my question is, do we follow that at all? Because I was in Little League and pony colt and girls softball and everything for years, and we never did anything like that. But in these days, it seems like it's kind of imperative to do that because you read the paper about different problems. So I'm wondering is, if So I'm wondering, is, if we keep it at the same idea, where the leagues actually do the fingerprinting, possibly, we should have all the names, at least in the city here, that they bring to us, and nobody is allowed to go on the field until we have their name. I think it's only fingerprinting that was suggested, I don't know what else they would do. I was in the old San Jose Little League, which is long gone, but we actually didn't have any problem on the field at all. Our only problem, really, was in the snack shack one time, where the lady escorted with the money, but that time, there was any problem in the field. So that's a thought, I think we should look into that, because I think it's pretty important right now, because you see it in the paper all the time. We've been pretty fortunate in West Covina, we hadn't any real problems, but other cities have. Next thing I'd like to mention is the, when I sit here all the time and listen to everybody coming up, I know transparency is a word they use now, that wasn't a word when I was in business, it was something different, like telecast it is, you don't have to remember today what you said tomorrow, or vice versa. But anyway, just a little bit of, just a little bit more transparency would keep some of the people up here happy with that coming up here every time. I'll give you some examples. When the Walmart went in over at Eastland, the council was in denial for I don't know how many months, as to who was going in there. It was asked, the question was-
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, Speaker, she has five minutes.
I spoke five minutes, ready? Anyway, they were in denial for all that time. August 29th, come out in the LA Times, Walmart won the West Covina, the very next meeting in September, still in denial, that's the type of thing I'm talking about. And other things, like the big league games, never hear anything about that, we never hear anything about the Gattusi Foundation's building, the, on the police station, supplemental, even though the supplemental income thing was on the consent calendar, nothing's ever been said about it, why it was, why it happened, and the City Hall property that we had a problem with, there was a cloud over that from day one, and there still is. And basically, that gives you an idea of what I'm talking about. So, thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Mr. George Doggden.
Do I get six minutes? Good evening, City Council, Mayor-
No.
And staff. My name is George Doggden, and I live here, reside in the city of West Covina. I'm actually here because of the rules decorum that I see here, and I was a little concerned at our last meeting. A number of people came up and spoke, one young lady that came up, from the group that's behind me now, that is a wall representative, about some issues that they were having in the safety in their community. The young lady came up, she gave her address, and then she continued on with what she needed to say to the city council. And while she was speaking to the city council, she made a comment that her husband works night, and she's home alone. It's very clear in the decorum that it states that, in Section 2-48A of the West Covina Municipal Court, that you shall give your name and city of residence. I know you have, in the past, expressed just that, and so have other members of the council that have been mayor, that's all you need to do. You do not need to put your address out there, because we are live-streamed, we're on live right now. So I wanted to bring that up, that maybe we could probably highlight that, make it a little bit bigger, so that people would understand that they do not need to put their own personal address down. I think it'd be of a little bit of a safety concern. You never knew who's out there that's watching this stuff, and then, that's, I hate to say it, it's almost an open invitation. It really bothered me last week when I heard that, so maybe we can address that, highlight it up here, if there's room on this paper to do it, and to make sure that these people remain safe when they speak here, and before a city council, and don't jeopardize their own safety. Thank you for listening to that part. And I just wanted to capitalize on this moment here, is to thank Chris Freeland and the rest of the staff for the food trucks, and the, it was a real good success, a large amount of people came out, it was a lot of fun, people were really enjoying themselves, the lines were long, and also, we closed out with Cold Duck, with the band that was out there. So it was a lot of fun, and special thanks to the city council for, and the staff, and everybody that makes things like this possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Leinbach.
Yeah, City Council, first of all, I want to express my sympathy concern to Councilman McIntyre, who underwent that criminal incident, where somebody robbed him, so I know it's horrifying, I wish him the best. So, also, another thing I want to make a quick point, I made this point much before, and this has been due in a hearing, like, everybody knows Forrest, what's the name, the, Royal Brown, not Forrest, ten, Royal Brown. But Royal Brown is real hard of hearing, I'm hard of hearing. And everybody says, well, you have, you have a capacity to expand it, or hearing aids, or whatever, because last meeting, I had a lot of trouble hearing the speakers. And I think you should put those, make them aware, because if this person has a hearing problem, they aren't going to come up and ask, ask help. So I'm just saying that, so you should be more cognizant, and have some hearing instruments out there to help, hearing aids, or whatever. Last meeting, two meetings ago, I remember, they had, were talking about the San Bernardino condos, we had a PowerPoint, Chris Freeland was, he put it together, did a good job. But afterward, when we have some of the people who opposed it, I was looking, and none of those speakers were telecasts from the front. And also, when they spoke last week about Woodgate Drive, about 78, 9, 10 people, the minority were telecast from the front. And when the thing started, I guess, we didn't define, we said we're going to, we're going to tell as part of it, but we couldn't do all of it, but the point I'm making is this, I really feel, be able to see the speaker on the cable, on the internet at home, is gives, the people get a better feel for the situation, what's going on. Now, right now, you take, like, you take President Bush, or Obama, you never shoot them from the rear, you shoot them from the front. And I just saying, I don't know, I just feel, is that we should be able to, I know Chris, I feel, part of the problem is this, Chris Freeland takes all the jobs, and he's got so many jobs, he's got to time the speakers, he's got to listen to the dialogue that's going on, and he has all these different things, and sometimes I feel that, I feel that he's overloaded, and I feel that, that he's overloaded, and I feel that he should have some help, and I think we should get a camera from a department, or whatever, or whatever, I just think, like, the Public Relations Department, I mean, they put these out, these, discover West Covina, and, you know, I feel, do a fairly good job, but then, I don't know what they do in Public Relations, I mean, why can't somebody from there, why can't they come down here and help out with the cameras or something, or why can't somebody else? I feel all these other cities, we went under, took this task, and we went out and bought all these extra cameras and these equipment, the purpose was to expand the meeting further. And the point of this, I feel, I'm kind of critical of it, I'm not blaming Chris Freeland, but I think he needs help, somebody should come down here and be able to shoot the, shoot the film, not the film, but shoot the internet. Now, you take City of Azusa, budget maybe half large, or less than that, they have, when I went to their meeting, they had somebody fully on task, monitoring the meeting, and changing the camera positions there. Here we go out there, and we just have one from the, shoots a camera from the front, and you look at the speakers from the back, and we're supposed to do away with it, but we still, I'm critical of what's happening. I think that we got to, you know, like, all these cities, like Covina, some Walnut, Diamond Bar, Glendale, Azusa, and Glendora, they have cameras from different angles, shooting in, they don't just always shoot in the back. Now, we have that capability here, but I just feel that Chris Freeland has too much on, he has to do, that he needs help, that we should get somebody from another department, I don't know, maybe Public Relations, I mean, all this time, put this thing out, I don't know what other functions they do, but I'm sure they could do other functions, but why can't they do it, or some other people do it? But I think we should make an effort to get somebody here, to make our camera be, make it look more, where you can see it from the front, and everybody can see the speakers, and get a better feel for the meeting, and that we, instead of being, always having one of the worst telecasts of our meetings, and I feel it has improved, but I think it needs a lot more improvement, and I think we need help, and we should get something else, or do something, and look at this, and re-design it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. James Toma.
Hi, I was actually here to speak on a specific agenda item, is that, is this the right order that you wanted to call me on? Okay. So, I'm here to speak on the proposed ordinance about the restriction of sale of the Civic Center property to private parties, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, good evening, good evening, staff. My name is James Toma, I'm a resident of West Covina. As we know, the proposed ordinance stems from the city council's terrible decision to approve an office building on the Civic Center, on the library parking lot, and that vote occurred over a year and a half ago. In January 2012, the city approved that private development, even though, one, the Civic Center is zoned for civic use, not private development, two, the proposed project would have created a lot of parking and traffic problems, and three, importantly, dozens of residents, myself included, adamantly opposed the project for the above reasons and other reasons. So, when I hear that some members of the council who supported that project before are against private development on the Civic Center, because they now see that the public opposes it, it leads me to wonder why they missed seeing or hearing all of us who opposed that project many months ago. So yes, we should not sell Civic Center property to private parties, and it should not have taken a recall campaign and two lawsuits to persuade the council of our view that private development doesn't belong on the Civic Center. And my final comment's actually a question, and that is, I'm a little bit confused, I see on the agenda the wording of the proposal, but on the document that was attached on the agenda on the website, it referred to this provision not affecting short-term leases or rentals of office space. And my question is, what is a short-term lease? Is that the wording of the provision that's being proposed to be enacted? And if you could give us a basis for why that is necessary to this proposed ordinance, I'd appreciate hearing the rationale. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lloyd Johnson.
Lloyd Johnson, resident of West Covina for over 40 years. First, I would like to say to Councilmember McIntyre, we're very glad there wasn't any physical harm done to you on the ordeal you went through, we're glad that everything was okay. Councilmembers, again, to Councilmember McIntyre, thank you for bringing this ordinance about the Civic Center forward. On the other hand, I do remember you standing up at the podium, stating as a developer, that you supported this project at that time. You said it was a very good project. What would have been the right thing to do then, would have been stand-up against this project. Councilmember Sotelo, thank you for your support on this ordinance. Although I do remember when you were the only member of the planning commission who voted for the project, you said back then, you believed that this was a very good project. The right thing would have been for you to do, was to agree with the other council, the other planning commissioners, and voted against this project. They believed it was a very bad project at the time. I don't want to assume the reasons both of you've changed your mind, I'm just glad you both did. This is a very good ordinance for the residents of West Covina. Never again will our Civic Center be put up for a fire sale. This takes it out of the hands from those who could care less about our beautiful Civic Center in the future, and puts it in the hands of those who really count the residents of West Covina, where it should be. The only thing I don't understand, why hasn't this council dropped the appeal of the lawsuit that was filed against the city, when there was a fire sale on this piece of property, which the city lost in court, which is still costing the taxpayers thousands of dollars in legal fees to the city attorney?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Phil Moreno.
My name is Philip Moreno, and I'm a resident of West Covina. I would like to raise a topic that I think everyone here would agree upon, members of the council, members of the city staff, and members of the audience. In 2010, before Chief Sagala left, I had a conversation with him, that's our fire chief that is no longer here. And I said, "Chief, when did the fire department request a replacement for a fire engine?" He said, "Mr. Moreno, that request was made under a capital improvement request in the year 2010." The members of the city council at that time either did not know, or were totally unaware of that request. So that's the first question I need to ask. Number two, radio cars had over 120,000 miles on them? When we're taking drug money to buy what this police department needs? When I first moved to West Covina in 1979, I took a class, being a deputy sheriff at the time, and at Mount SAC, the instructor, a lieutenant from West Hollywood Station, said he would never live in a county area. And we asked him why. And he said, "Does anybody here live in the city?" And I raised my hand, he said, "Where do you live?" I said, "I live in West Covina," and he said, "Why did you move there?" And I said, "I have a family, it has a great police department, it has a great fire department, and has damn good schools. That's why I pay taxes, that's why all these people pay taxes." And if the city council in 2010 did not know, or did not care, that our fire department needed another fire truck, then I think it's time that this city establish a public safety commission. Other cities, like City of Los Angeles, has a police commission, they look at the actions of their police department. I need to not depend on a city council member ever again, to know that my fire department needs a fire engine, or that it doesn't have the money to pay for six firemen that are here now on a grant, and we may lose them in September, or that the police department doesn't have the equipment they need. Is that your job? I thought that's why I elected you guys. But maybe not anymore. The citizens of West Covina, I think, would back me. We need a public safety commission, five citizens of the city, from five different parts of the city. When John Shoemaker is at a Saturday event for his grandkids, and he calls the police department, they say, "We don't have any policemen available." When this man agrees that you need a cop when somebody robs you, what does it take for us to get what we need for our fire and police department? Maybe we should ask the five council members in 2010, 2011, 2012. So I've written a statement to two people who are running for office. I've given you, Mr. McIntyre, and Mr. Sotelo, my statement, and here I'll read it. "I have a question to ask Mr. Sotelo and Mr. McIntyre. I have questions that I would like to ask, and I would like a written response to each of my questions, from each of you." The first item that I have attached is at page three of a webpage titled, quote, "About Municipal Government-Guide to Government, California State Government." And in the fifth paragraph on this page, it describes the City of West Covina's type of government. It's called "Council Manager." Three-fourths of California cities have some form of centralized professional administration. The administrator may be called a city manager, city administrator, or chief administrative officer. Under this type of administration, the elected council provides political leadership and makes policy, while a full-time professional manager directs city departments to carry out that policy. You establish the policy, not the city staff. Mr. Sotelo, the second item that I have attached is a copy of your biography-
Sir, you have to address, sir, you have to address all your comments directly to the mayor, can I trust any?
Madam Mayor, starting with the fourth sentence in the second paragraph, it reads, "Rob feels that a safe community provides a sense of security. He would like to focus on public safety. West Covina needs to continue to be a full-service city, offering residents and businesses the benefit of complete public services, police and fire." Based on those statements, I would like you to answer the following questions. Number one, did you include in the fiscal budget, Madam Mayor, in this council, in July 2013 to June 2014, the purchase of a fire truck that the fire department requested in the year 2010? If not, can you indicate what you've done to get a new fire truck for our fire department? And the second one, did you include in the fiscal budget of July 2013 to June 2014, the salaries of all fire personnel now in the West Covina Fire Department? Remember that some of the members of our fire department are being paid by a grant. The residents of West Covina need council members who will spend our tax dollars on city services-
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, Speaker, she has five minutes.
One more sentence. One more sentence. "The residents of West Covina need city council members who will spend our tax dollars on city services before they give themselves full-time benefits." So, now I will ask each of you a third question-
Sir, your time has elapsed, and you're about to engage in campaigning and electioneering. You're not allowed to at this diocese, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Mayo.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Lisa Mayo, and I'm a West Covina resident for thirty-three years. I'm also a founder of They Will Know, which is a domestic violence program that teaches teens and young adults about domestic violence through their performing arts. But today, I'm here only as a West Covina Women's Club board member, because we have been trying to give scholarships to our West Covina High School students. I do have a meeting with Edgewood Principal, but I really would like you to help me, because I am in charge of scholarships for the West Covina students, to be able to get into the door of the West Covina High School, which has been very difficult to get into. We've tried for almost three years. And they tell us, when we call, they don't call us back, but when they do, they say they do not have any students that we can give them scholarships to. So, we seem to go out of our district, but we would like to be able to give them here in the West Covina area. So, I would like somebody to tell me what to do, or what to say, or how do I get in the door to be able to give our students of West Covina scholarships? So, with that, I thank you very much for your time, and please, 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 help me. Oh, and also, we have a social event on the 24th. It's a social, you can look it up in our Facebook or website. George could probably tell you more about it than I could.
Can you tell me?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Shirley Leon.
My name is Shirley Leon. I'm a resident of West Covina for forty-two and a half years. First of all, I want to say hello to everybody. Last time I asked for the pavement to be paved in our neighborhood, I'm happy to tell you it was done. Thank you all very much. Now, I read in the paper where the price of metal is awful expensive for signs, for stop signs, or any kind of sign. Is it possible, when they start marking the asphalt, if they could put it down to speed limit also? We have people, we're right behind New Galas High School. They drive by so rapidly, and all, it's unbelievable how fast people go. And also, could we please try to look in to get more policemen in our area? A little bit over two and a half weeks ago, my husband and I were going out for lunch on Sunday. We got a phone call on our cell phone. It was the security system. Somebody was trying to break into our house. I have good news for you. Whoever did has a sore foot. They hit the rainbird sprinkler and sheared it off completely. So, I'm hoping they have a good aching foot for a while. I'm awful sorry, sir, that you had that problem, because it's awful frightening, for you feel like safety, and yet it's not, and all. I would also like to know, they have left all of these equipment down there by my home on Grassmere, these, like, signs and all, saying the roads is closed on Grassmere, right off of Finley Street in West Covina. They're still down there. Kids are playing with them right now. I cannot go out and say, "Hey, this is not yours. I don't have authority or anything," excuse me, "to say about it," or all. I also want to say, Frederick, he has been so good helping us down here for our community. It's an honor to know him. Thank you very much, Mr. Frederick. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Irene Fleck.
I'm concerned about the ordinance that you're talking about. It is very explicit that we can only rent or lease or sale to a public instead of a private. I'm concerned, because it opens the door to any public thing, I'm concerned about just what public entails. Is public use subsidized housing? Is it drug treatment? Is it medical treatment? I think that that is leaving the door way too open, and I would like to have some clarification, if we could, on just what kind of sales, rent, or lease we can have when it says private. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That does conclude our speaker cards for this evening, and I do have a couple of quick items that have been brought forward. One was in reference to the ordinance. Mr. City Manager, I know that there were some issues that need to be reviewed and meetings that still needed to be, to take place before we move forward with that. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor and Members of City Council. I did contact Lola Finley to let her know that that item would not be agendized here tonight, as we did want an opportunity to review the ordinance that was presented. And also, I do understand that the mayor and council members did want the opportunity to also speak to her before considering some of the items. The ordinance in question was an ordinance that was presented to the city council previously, and staff just wanted the opportunity to look at the ordinance and talk to Ms. Finley as far as, you know, what's, you know, her real intent, as far as what she wants to achieve, and try to see if we can accommodate her on that.
Great. Thank you so much. So, I know we had tried to meet, I think it was Monday, but it didn't work out time-wise, so hopefully later in the week we'll get together, because I want to understand more of what we can do and then move forward on that as well, because I think that's what everyone's doing on that item. So, to let you guys know, we are, you know, moving forward and trying to work diligently on that. And then, I'm going to go down the list on just some of the items that people had brought forward, and hopefully I cover everybody. Somebody had mentioned something about hearing aids and hearing devices. We do have those. Now, Mr. Freeland, who would we need to contact if you need to get those? Because I know we have them, because residents have-
That's correct. As it mentions on the front of your agenda packets, that if you need, if folks are hearing impaired, they need the service of a sign language interpreter. That can be arranged prior to the meeting, a few days prior, through the city clerk's office. In addition, we do have hearing-assisted learning devices that are available in the back of the council chambers, and those just need to be checked out by city staff.
Very good. Thank you with that. The next option, or, I'm sorry, the next question was in reference to, there was a couple of items in reference to the item that's on the agenda for this, we did have at the last meeting, on the ordinance, I believe that's the ordinance. I'll kind of skip over that one for right now, so we can bring that up then. Bear with me, everyone. A lot of notes. Oh, somebody had brought forward in reference to the West Covina High School. And do we, we have a school board liaison committee, and I don't know who the two council members that serve on that, maybe that can be something that they can-
Madam Mayor, I think any of us can just make a call to the school. I'm surprised they're not interested in scholarships, Lisa. We'll, I'll make a call myself.
Okay. And I was hoping that we can get through that way as well, because that's, that's very nice, and I hope that they would want that. Okay. And there was mention of some issues of our, I guess it was a Walmart, Big League Dreams, and we had two years of meetings on Big League Dreams. I know there was one meeting, we met on a Saturday for probably like ten hours, so I don't think anything was being hidden, as well as I know I have met with residents that had any questions about the Big League Dreams, and I think that we were very educational on that and showed them exactly. So, I wanted residents to know as well if they have any questions on those type of items. We always have our items agendized. They are also on the website, and we try and do everything. We have a city attorney over here that makes sure that we are doing everything within the laws, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And then, there was a couple of items in reference to the question of the lease options, and maybe we can get some clarification when that item comes up for those residents. And I think that's all I have. Any other council member have any, Mayor Pro Tem, Harper-
Just to follow up on, oh, she's already left, Shirley Leon, if we could have the city engineer make sure the equipment's picked up down there, so, thank you.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, if I could just comment on the Walmart, I just wanted to add that the Walmart was a project that was not approved by the city. It was a project that was brought in by the property owner themselves. The city didn't have any authority as far as whether or not a Walmart could come to our city. And I just want to point out the fact is that the property owner itself requested the city to not disclose any tenants that they bring in, and we were not at liberty to disclose whether a Walmart was coming in or any tenant for that fact, you know, based upon their request. So, I just wanted to point out to the residents that, you know, the Walmart was brought in by that property owner, and that the city council and the city didn't have any play as far as whether they came into our city or not.
Thank you so much. And again, a couple of things I'll ask for, some directions in reference to clarity on the ordinance when that item does come up, which is our item number four?
Yes, you can.
Councilmember McIntyre.
I noticed the common thread in most of the residents' concerns are based on public safety, and as of recent events, I'm fully aware of the need for public safety and our priorities as council members up here to provide public safety, and that means provide or create or encourage funding sources so we can pay for these public safety people that we need. And it's just, the one point I want to make out, just like the gentlemen who did what they did to me, they're not from here. Most of the people, I would say, a high percentage of the people that are committing these crimes are not from this community. And we, as citizens of California right now, need to be aware of what the state is putting everybody under. Glendora, Laverne, Rancho, Upland, great communities. We're underneath the same problems with the, quote, overcrowding of jails and the federal government making the state supposedly cut criminals, and then the state's shoving them to the counties. The bottom line is, we don't have a say here as a body with what's getting released into our streets that all the communities are experiencing right now. And if you really want to be heard, and we want to make an impact on this, we need to let our higher-up political people understand that it's, whatever they're, whatever they've done, it's, things are happening out there, not good things, to a lot of different communities. And as far as we're concerned up here, all we can do is try to encourage business, to create revenues, to hire more police officers, and we are extremely aware of that need. And at the same time, we have all the other interests that the city has that we need to continue to operate with, parks and streets and so forth that make our community nice. So, it's not an easy job to try to juggle all these interests, knowing full well that public safety, because if you're not safe at your house and you don't feel safe, I mean, that's just not, that's just not cool. It's unacceptable for me, and I'm going to do everything in my power to prevent that. And public policy is tricky. I mean, no one public policy issue or ordinance or different public policy items are perfect. So, we try to, you know, balance everything and cover all the interests that would be involved, just like some of the concerns with the Civic Center, because issues came up, well, if you stop all leasing, well, in the past, we've leased portions of our parking lot to events for short periods of time for events. I know we do deal concerts in the park, Greater West Covina, the GWC is renting space. And I don't think that was the intent of anybody to try to prevent that, especially if we have a city hall in the future that could potentially be a, portions of it were vacant and say attorneys wanted to rent it, and it might be a good idea, because attorneys might want to be next to the courthouse. You wouldn't want to cancel a revenue-generating source. I think we could all agree on that. That wasn't the intent of what everybody was fighting for. So, when you're crafting that policy, it's tricky to not exclude things, things that we are used to and accustomed to. So, we're just doing the best we can with the language. I know after the meeting, different citizens came up to me and asked, "Well, what about, you know, when we release the parking lot? What about the Greater West Covina?" It was like, "Yeah, we're going to work on trying to create that." So, that's the intent of the language that we've come up with, with some of the concerns about short-term, what is short-term? Short-term, short-term. Not to mention that if something happens in the future, just like this process, this great country has given us the ability to come up here, express our concerns and so forth, I'm sure we're going to hear from disgruntled citizens with whatever has happened, and we'll be able to make those changes. But the idea here is just to include what the spirit of what the petition was, which was the stopping the sale or leasing to a private party, public, we got county next door. So, what happens if the county comes over here or a school district, you know, that we work with, because they're another government agency? So, it's just tricky, and that's just my point. We do the best we can. We try to include everybody's concern, so just bear with us, and that's, that's just what we're trying to do. Thanks.
Thank you very much. If there's no further comments, we'd like to drop down on the calendar, and we have our consent calendar, and a motion is in order, if there's no items that need to be removed.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve, and I would like to make a comment on the, actually I have the chief of police maybe come down and make a comment on item three, but I'll make a motion to approve all the items.
A motion to approve all items?
I'll second.
A motion and a second? Did you want to wait for that till we have the speaker?
Let's go ahead and vote on it. I just think we need to go ahead and report.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you for coming down.
Over the last few council meetings, you recently passed a resolution addressed to the governor regarding AB 109 and the effects that it's had on our community and neighboring communities as well. And in that resolution, you asked to have city representatives, such as yourself, meet with the governor to address these issues. Recently, I received correspondence where California League of Cities, which represents all the cities in California, and California Police Chiefs Association, which represents all the California police chiefs, are doing a similar thing, and they've, they're asking for your support, and their focus is on a local municipal law enforcement perspective, which I believe is very important, because part of the league's and Cal chief's agenda is to look out for the little cities that are being left behind in the AB 109 matter as far as getting finances to deal with the problems that are, that have been given to us from the state. So, I'd like to thank you for your previous support and ask for your continued support. I believe that along with your request, that this is an important statewide matter, and the California League of Cities and the Cal chiefs would be well-equipped to represent us with our state legislators.
Thank you so much. Is there any questions from staff? Of staff? No? Okay. Thank you so much. We really appreciate all your hard work, and we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is under Mayor Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Andrew McIntyre, number four, item which is a consideration for adopting the ordinance. Now, we did see this at the last meeting. This is the, I believe, reading of this ordinance, so a motion is in order. If there's no further discussion, I think, Councilmember McIntyre.
Taking what I said earlier, I think this ordinance does a pretty good job of addressing the tricky nature of an ordinance like this, and I'm just saying, a lot of work went into this, and we're trying the best we can, and that's our intent, was when we crafted and added some of this different language because of the current situations we have with the Civic Center. So, with that, I'd move to ask my colleagues to join with me in approving this ordinance.
All right. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you so much. And at this time, if there's no AB 123 conference meeting reports, we could do those verbally. Any city council requests for reports, studies, or investigations? I have no reports. Councilmember comments, and a motion for adjournment is in order. Councilmember Sotelo.
Steve, you gonna say something? I guess I have to.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Juan. Yeah. He passed away this Sunday. He was my brother-in-law. He was a long county resident in West Covina, and just like to adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
I'll second.
Do you have any comments? No? Okay. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries five-zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.